Thank you. I call to order the Tuesday, July 1st, 2025 Committee of the Whole for Planning and Public Works. All council members are in attendance with Councilmember Fields and Forsyth online today. The first, we have eight items on our agenda today, and the first, we're going to kick off with our public works items. Item number one is award the bid to A1 Landscaping of Snohomish, Washington, in the amount of $2,739,391 for the Bell Red Buffeted Bike Lanes project. Introducing the item is Deputy Director Vangie Garcia. Welcome.
Thank you, and welcome, council. This is Steve will be talking about this as long-awaited Bell Red Buffeted Bike Lanes project.
Thank you, council. Steve Gibbs, Capital Construction. We're asking for this construction contract for A1 Landscaping to be awarded at the consent agenda on the 7/15 meeting. This is a project that is going to give us some extra room for the bike lane along Bell Red. It will also fix about 1,000 feet of degraded stormwater pipe, and then also do some ADA ramps along that route, along with a kind of overlay once all that work is completed. So that's from Westlake to Northeast 30th. So consent on the 15th. Happy to ask, answer any questions.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Really excited about this one. Are there any questions from the council? Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve, for joining us. I was so glad that you walked through it a bit, because at first glance, you know, if somebody's listening, they just hear, "Oh, buffered bike lanes. That's a lot of money for buffed," and it's like, "No, but read and look, it's the gift that keeps on giving, and there's more, and waits, and there's more." So I'm very, very excited about this. I'm also excited, I recently have been doing some cycling over in Seattle, and I've ridden on Beacon Hill specifically before they had buffered bike lane, and then since having buffered bike lane. And I talked to a number of motorists in the, in the community there as well, and the feedback has been that both sides feel so much safer, both the driver, that a cyclist isn't going to pop out, or they won't get distracted, as well as the cyclist in feeling a bit more safer going up the hill. So I'm very, very excited about this. Again, thank you for unpacking it a bit.
Council President Kritzer.
I think my mic was on. Thank you so much. I'm excited about this, too. I actually recently decided to take a tour around on my bike all around Redmond to see where we have gaps, and I got right to this part and said, "Wow, I can't wait for these buffered bike lanes." So really looking forward to it. So two questions. One is just to be clear when we talk about constraining the project within the existing right-of-way and, and the existing curb-to-curb width, you know what I'm going to ask about, does that mean that we're not going to be doing, having to do much tree removal as part of this, this project, because it'll be on kind of the, the street as it exists?
That's, that's correct. The trees are safe on this one.
Great, okay, good to know. And then secondly, in the attachment, it talks about Schedule B with an option with City of Bellevue. Can you just share a little bit more about that?
Yeah, so we, we split the, the contract up, and we stopped short of Northeast 30th for the main contract, and then we had an additive alternate to do the improvements through Bellevue. And the costs that came in for that schedule exceeded the budget significantly, and so we did not award that, that section. So we'll be transitioning in at the intersection and then connecting to Bellevue's bike lane.
And are we in any conversation with Bellevue about that?
Yeah, we've been coordinating with them to get permits and stuff to do the work, but with the bids that came in, it was like double the estimate, so we elected not to move forward with that. And Bellevue will have the opportunity to complete that if they so desire.
Okay, and is that, is that conversation occurring, that they may be taking that up, or that's something for them to consider as part of their planning?
I think, I haven't personally had a conversation with them, but I do believe that the transportation folks have been coordinating with Bellevue's transportation folks.
The project manager on this has been having conversations with Bellevue and also with our contractor, so as we go along, that maybe there is something that we can work out for that Schedule B.
Great. I think as, as we can connect and continue that experience all the way into Bellevue's bike lanes, that's wonderful. Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? Councilmember Fields.
Yeah, thank you. I share in improved safety for bicyclists. I think I've made that clear, so I appreciate this. I'm a little bit, maybe I, I didn't quite understand when we discussed this in the past, but the contingency amount seems very large compared to the overall contract. What, what are we expecting from a risk perspective that would make that so large?
I think it was the, the Bellevue piece, because once we took that schedule out, that, those monies went back into the contingency. So that is a little higher than you would normally see.
I see. So because we, because it was more expensive than we thought.
Yeah, it was, it was approaching a million dollars just for that short stretch to go through the intersection.
Okay. So you don't expect to use 800 and some odd thousand dollars worth of contingency? Is that how I would read what you're, you just said?
I always hope that we don't use all the contingency.
Okay, because you, you understand that I'm seeing it as almost 33% or something?
Yes, yes.
What would be the normal percentage for a project, a construction project like this, that's fairly straightforward?
Really straightforward. We are doing some digging, and so that, that would be a slightly higher contingency, but generally, we operate within probably 15 to 25%.
Yeah, okay, all right, noted, and appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. So one of my first go-to-be-something-nice-and-soft on the, being on bikes, now on maybe a less fund, but I like this part of it, in replacing the pipes. So I know that the contingency fund, understanding that it's a bit higher, because we are going to be digging, and we're going to be replacing some pipe in there. We'd never know, it's kind of like, you don't know until you open up the walls what you're going to find, so we're, in essence, opening up the walls. Mr. Gibbs, can you tell us, for, for those that are listening, why it's important for us to be replacing this pipe?
Yeah, so anytime we're going to overlay a section of roadway, we want to make sure that the infrastructure underneath is in good shape, so that we don't overlay the road and then have to come back in a, in a couple of years and dig that pipe up or what. So we, and the crews go out and video all the pipe within this project, and there's some significantly older CMP corrugated metal pipe in, in this section of Redmond, and it, we don't have good history with it. It's, it's 50-plus years in age, and it just starts to corrode, and a lot of the pipes really don't have bottoms in it anymore. And so crews went in there and identified, it's about 1,000 feet of pipe that we'll be replacing along this route.
A follow-up to that, if I may, Chair?
Yeah, one final question, and then we'll need to move on.
Thank you. So then with what we're replacing it with, then what is the lifespan of that?
The PVC or the high-density poly-pipe, 50 years.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any objections to this item going to consent on July 15th? Seeing none, we will have this back then. Thank you so much. Looking forward to that. The next item on our agenda is to award construction contract to Always Active Services LLC of Snohomish, Washington, in the amount of $364,458 for the Meadow Park Sport Court Replacement Project. Director, Deputy Director Garcia, would you like to tell us more?
I'm going to lean on Steve again, but we've talked about, we brought these parks, court replacements before on our CIP updates, and so this is another, the final stretch for construction.
Yeah, this is a fairly simple court replacement. We're going to be taking out all the old court surfacing and some of the adjacent sidewalk fencing, and some of the support, support equipment, and then replacing it. And then we'll also be striping for pickleball, since pickleball is getting quite popular. Looking to bring this to consent on the 15th.
Thank you. Are there questions from the council? Council President Kritzer.
To be clear on the pickleball, those are the, the courts there are pickleball courts currently, so it'll be an update.
I'm sorry, we've got so many courts going, I got this confused with Reservoir Park, so you're correct.
Oh, cool, so it'll just be a free fresh of pickleball.
Yes, yes, and then they'll have individual striping for basketball.
Oh, great. Well, this is my neighborhood, so I'm excited.
Mr. Gibbs, I think this project's going to be wildly popular except for the, the time in which the park is impacted, and folks can't use it. Can you give us a sense of when we expect this to take place, and about how long the park will be impacted?
Yeah, we, we restricted the working days, so it's about a month of active construction. Obviously, summer peak time for the park, but it's also when we need to get the paving and especially the striping down. And so, once we get this contract executed, I expect probably active construction in about six weeks will start, and then it'll take them about a month.
Great, thank you. Council President Forsyth.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm dropping some of my questions in the chat. There's a large discrepancy in the bids from 364K all the way up to 1.4 million. Can you speak to that main reason in being, wanting to avoid large change orders down the road?
Yes, so in that particular bid that you're looking at, they used a, their total price and the unit price, and when we multiply that by the units, it got that huge number, and I think they just misinterpreted the bid documents.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, team. Any objection to this item going to consent on July 15th? Seeing none, we will have this back on the 15th. Thank you so much. The third item on our agenda is to approve consultant agreement for the curbside management projec, excuse me, curbside management plan, project, the project to create the plan, as it were. Deputy Director Garcia, would you like to introduce this item?
Sure. Today, I have Paul Cho and Isabel Diaz from our Traffic Operations Safety Engineering Group. Isabel is a project management for this project. This is also expected to go to consent, 7/15.
Good afternoon. My name is Isabel Diaz, Senior Traffic Engineer with Public Works, and this item is to approve the consultant agreement with Walker Consultants for the development of the city's curbside management plan in the amount of $115,000. As the city continues to grow and transition from a suburb to a more urban environment, the curb space is becoming a valuable public asset, once primarily used for parking. The curb now is being expected to support some other uses, including on-demand pickups, commercial deliveries, multimodal transportation, and other uses. With the curb space being limited and increasing the demand for the curb space, we have been committed to managing, managing the curb, the, the curbside in a way that is provide and support equity and livability to the community and to the stakeholders of the city as well. The consultant will be using information from gathered, or data gathered from the parking study that the planning department is currently leading and is currently underway. And the purposes will be to developing a more comprehensive curbside management plan that will be focusing on the three urban centers of Redmond. We would like the approval to include this item in the consent agenda for July 15th.
Thank you, Ms. Diaz. Really appreciate that. Questions from the council?
Seeing none, I'll share just, this is a hot topic of the council. We are very excited to see this come through. So the final question, then, is any objection to this item going to consent on July 15th? Looks like we're good to go. We're excited to move this one forward. Thank you, Ms. Diaz, and thanks, Paul.
Something to look forward to is that the stakeholder engagement is part of this contract. I was kind of assuming that was the question that was coming, so that has been well thought out.
Really appreciate that, Deputy Director Garcia. Thank you. The next item is from the Planning and Community Development Department. Item number four is the approval of an on-call consultant contract for the Transportation Planning and Engineering Group. Online, we have Deputy Director Seraphi Allen, and in the room, we have Francesca Liberty. Thank you. I mean, welcome. Join us.
Thank you.
We'd love to hear more.
Thank you. Happy to be here. Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, I'll note, online is Deputy Director Allen and Transportation Planning Manager Michael Hints as well. So since 2009, City of Redmond uses transportation planning and engineering on-call consultant services to expand the capability of Redmond staff and accelerate delivery of transportation planning and engineering services to the community. The primary focus of the consultants has been to augment staff's efforts to advance projects such as bicycle facility design, traffic engineering studies, traffic modeling, transit planning, and design, among other things. The use of on-call agreements has proven effective and efficient in responding to a variety of planning and engineering needs quickly. Each of these on-call contracts will be for a period of two years, with an option to be extended for an additional two years, and each contract has a maximum allowable contract value. Through the city's solicitation process, four consulting firms were selected for the 2025 to 2027 on-call agreements. They are DKS, Farr &amp; Peers, Parametrics, and SOMAS, as well as IDAX for our traffic data collection services. The existing on-call contracts expire on August 31st, 2025. Our selected firms need to be under contract before expiration to avoid delays to upcoming and ongoing projects. We're requesting approval of this item as part of the consent agenda at the July 15th Business Meeting.
Thank you so much for the update. Are there questions from the council on this item? Okay, are there any objections to this item moving to consent on July 15th?
Wonderful, well, we will have those back. Thank you, Francesca. Are you sticking around for the next item?
I'm sticking around, I'm still here.
All right, wonderful. So the next item on our agenda is to prepare us for a study session on July 8th, which is next week. This is our Transportation Master Plan status update, and the chapters we're reviewing are the Draft Transportation Demand Management Chapter and the Draft Pedestrian Network Chapter. Francesca, would you like to share a little more?
I would love to. As you know, our Transportation Master Plan is the functional strategic plan that guides our transportation investment and activities that support Redmond 2050. We are requesting a study session on July 8th, as you mentioned, to present our pedestrian chapter and Transportation Demand Management, or TDM, chapters of the TMP, and both draft chapters were included on our agenda materials. The Pedestrian Network Chapter is centered on creating an accessible and connected walking network that is safe and comfortable for all users, and the TDM chapter focuses on reducing drive-alone trips in Redmond through encouraging the use of transit and active transportation modes, and through other various programmatic strategies. At the study session, we'll also provide an update on our community engagement to date, including our recent focus groups that we conducted this past quarter in our partnership with Eastside For All. A little information about those focus groups, we met four times during this past spring, including nine organizations throughout Redmond, community-based organizations, and our discussions focused on the concerns of the focus group members surrounding our transportation topics in Redmond, and how different strategies can be implemented in the TMP to address these concerns. We'll be following up with the focus group members and their guests at an open house in September to present how we incorporated their feedback into the TMP. And then finally, we'll highlight our future touchpoints and any upcoming milestones.
Really appreciate that. Thank you so much. Are there questions from, from the council for our study session next week, on either of the chapters? Or the engagement process that Francesca told us a bit about?
I'll go ahead and hop in. Oh, Council President Kritzer. Okay, I'll hop in really quickly. I, I think there's a lot of interest on the council in the transportation demand management, and I, I think you're pretty familiar with some of the questions and interests of the council. On the pedestrian chapter, a couple things jumped out at me. When we get to lighting, especially on our trails, we've kind of been having this other conversation on the margin around, and we hear, quite frankly, quite a bit from the public, and when the council took a walk with the Audubon Society, we hear a lot of concern about light pollution. And so I would be curious, I didn't see a direct connection to, to that concern with the lighting that was presented here, so I'd be curious if there's been thought or other policies that are relevant to that at this time. I understand if that comes a little later, it's a deeper, slightly more detailed level. Also, when it comes to speed bumps and traffic calming, I think that this is worth spending a little bit of time on, quite frankly, because residents ask us about this a lot. We experience neighborhoods who have impacts from, say, their favorite trans, their favorite app that gets them directions from here to there, rerouting into neighborhoods, and neighborhoods feeling the impact of commute traffic kind of speeding through their neighborhood. And so when we get the question, you know, what, what does the city need in order to consider adding speed bumps here, there, or other way, I, I'd like to just spend a little time on that, because it's of public interest. And I think there's an interesting conversation around signaling in this chapter. I, I don't have a specific question on it, but I just, I really appreciated that. Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. I will note, I think when we were talking about the, some of the last TMP items, it did come up around the, the kind of transportation demand management questions. So if we can, as Councilmember Stewart noted, hearken back to some of those questions that had come up, in particular, how we think about, I think, what I had brought up at the time, and then it was like, this is going to be the future conversation, is when we think about especially some of the changes to bus routes and transportation as the Eastlink Connections project goes through, and kind of all the different pieces are coming in, really, as we start to add all of the new solutions, you know, to be able to talk about how we articulate that in this plan, or, and how it relates to kind of our functional strategies, to be able to engage our public and make sure that they're aware of, of options to be able to get around. I think that's of real interest to me. And then I guess, similar to the lighting conversation, I think what's interesting in the pedestrian chapter is that we have some of these things that create some, there, there are different types of policy objectives that we think about, and so we have both kind of with lighting of wanting to have things well-lit for, for safety and easy, easy access, and then, but also thinking about light pollution, similar with street trees. I saw there's a section on that, so just kind of thinking about how we balance that. I know we had in one of the other chapters also thinking through, like how we set policy on that, but that's just continued to be something, especially as we think about kind of the ADA accessibility on sidewalks, but also ensuring, which I appreciate in this, is kind of having that tree canopy for a comfortable walking environment, so as we can cover that and how we think about those two things together. That'd be great.
Great. Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thank you. I will plus one, or plus two, I guess, the lighting conversation, and then plus one, the traffic calming measures element as well. And then in the pedestrian section, I was looking at page four, and I'd be interested in talking about adding an exclusion for faux-brick imprints and stamped concrete designs in the mobility barriers section. I love that we're going universal design, but I had a chance to do a ride-along in a wheelchair, and the amount of vibrations and jarring that those stamped faux decorative things can add is, is quite jarring and quite, not, not good for those in, in wheelchairs. And then as well as looking at the, having a conversation around the curb cuts, seeing that 49% are non-compliant, and only 14% meet ADA standards, just wanting to know when we're going to be seeing full or as close to full capacity as we can throughout our city. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. And my colleague, Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Thank you. In a long line of sight, you know, we talked a little bit about the lighting on it, as we're continuing to grow and have more volume in our, our growth areas, oftentimes, it's becoming more and more difficult for pedestrians or anybody who's moving around multimodality to, to be able to see around corners. There are specific areas that I'm thinking, I reside in downtown Redmond, so I'm thinking about like at 83rd and 165th, there on the corner, you've got a curb ramp, and it looks like you could cross there, however often you can't see because of the parked cars or trees, like there's competing things that, that get in the way of line of sight. So I'd like to know, what are we doing to gauge that for the safety of our pedestrians in areas where crossing is allowed? How, how we're navigating that, how we're considering it? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the study session?
Okay, well, this conversation's going to come up quick. We're going to be back here next week. If folks have lingering thoughts, they can email you in the next day or so, but really, you guys are, especially given the holiday, you're pretty much have tomorrow, I think, to prepare, so we'll be, we appreciate your expedited preparation on that. Yeah, thank you so much. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Wonderful. And the next item on our agenda is back with planning and community development. We will welcome to the table Glenn Coyle, and then once again, we have Deputy Director Allen online. This is the establishing of the 2025-2026 Annual Comprehensive Plan Docket. Welcome, Glenn.
Thank you. Good afternoon, council members. I'm Glenn Coyle, Senior Planner. Staff is requesting council to establish by ordinance the 2025-26 Annual Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket. This is the first docket since the Redmond 2050 Comp Plan Update. We would like to see whether council is ready to establish the docket by ordinance at the August 4th Business Meeting, or would like the opportunity to review and discuss during the July 22nd study session. If council would like this item at the study session, staff requests that council members identify topics for discussion. And for some additional background on this topic, the city received one application for inclusion in the 2025-26 docket, namely the Transportation Element and Master Plan Update, which you just heard about, in part from Francesca. The Planning Commission concluded that the application is consistent with the threshold criteria set forth in the Redmond Zoning Code, and recommends that it be added to the annual docket. The Commission also considered inclusion of a second item, a land use map and concurrent zoning map amendment for the property at 690188 Ave, Northeast, also known as the Redmond Flex Site, but ultimately decided not to recommend adding that item. Thank you, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for introducing this, Glenn. And so, council, this is, we will need to hear from, from the majority about whether we have further questions and would like a study session on the 22nd of July, or whether this item is something we would be willing to expedite on August 4th. So first, I'll go to Council Vice President Forsyth, and then Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. I'm just interested in a conversation about the implications if we did add the Redmond Flex project. I read through the packet, and it seemed like it could have gone either way, so I'd just be interested in more information there.
Is there anything you'd like to add, Glenn, or have you shared what you came prepared to share on that?
I would just add, at this point, that it is up to the council's discretion.
Absolutely, yeah.
That there are some additional issues that probably wouldn't, may not be better at a study session.
Yeah, absolutely. So, Council Vice President Forsyth, I will circle back around toward the end of our conversation to, to get your thoughts on, is that, is that a vote in favor of a study session, but we'll continue the conversation here. Council President Kritzer.
Thank you. It's been a little while since we did a docket, a docket, because we were working on our big Comp Plan Update. So to be clear, is the decision here, I thought that we have a step in which we adopt the docket to then work on, and then we will actually adopt the items, or then, then we will work through those items and then vote on those items. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. This process right now is establishing the annual docket, so at that, once it's established, the item- So at that, once it's established, the items, the amendments that are being proposed will then be reviewed at a deeper analysis that's identified in the Redmond Zoning Code, and then Planning Commission will make an ultimate recommendation of whether they support that amendment with council adopting those amendments.
Great. So just, and I'll just say again, in layperson's terms, we're deciding what it is we're going to decide on.
Yes.
And, but once we decide on the docket, then items that aren't included, we will not later make a decision on.
That is correct.
Thank you.
We're just putting together the list of items to review.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Director Allen had their hand up and then down. Deputy Director, did you have?
Yeah, Council President Kritzler, I think simplified it in the way I just wanted to say that the council will decide, if you decided to add the project, it doesn't mean you're approving that project moving forward, it's just adding it to the docket. So that's what that study session would be about.
Thank you. Yes, and the reminder is that the Planning Commission did not include it, but it is within the council's prerogative to go ahead and add it if we so choose after a study session on the 22nd. Councilmember Nueva Camina, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Thank you.
Just wanted to chime in that I'm comfortable moving forward establishing the annual Comprehensive Plan Docket as is, and thanking the Commission for all the work that they did to get it ready.
Other council members? Councilmember Sal Houdin?
Yeah, I'm good to move it as is as well.
Councilmember Anderson? No comment?
No comment.
No comment. Online? Councilmember Fields, and then Council Vice President Forsyth?
Well, I guess I'm prepared to move it forward, other than we have a council member that wanted more information on an item that's not included, so I'd like to hear more about that.
Okay, thank you. Council Vice President Forsyth?
I don't have a clear picture of where I stand just yet, but it sounds like there might be enough support to move it forward, so I'm going with the body.
Well, we don't have a majority yet either way, so if you are interested in hearing more about the second item on the 22nd, there may be others who are interested too. Council President Kritzler has her hand up.
I'd just say for scheduling purposes, that maybe if we want to have another touch on it, or if councilmembers didn't get the chance and wanted to submit a question, potentially we could see if there's a little bit of committee space we could use instead of going full study session on it. That'd be my suggestion, although we do already have some time, but I do know that our upcoming study sessions are pretty busy.
This is Steve. Is it possible to put it on new business at the business meeting?
Is it possible to put it on new business on the business meeting on the 15th? Yes?
Skipping, yes, skipping the study session and just moving to the business meeting, but making this, rather than consent, putting it on as new business. And that way, if there are questions that develop on the item that's not included, we can cover it then, and then you don't have to schedule another study session.
Yeah, some of the scheduling gets beyond my duties as your chair. I see that Councilmember Anderson has an additional comment, and then we can maybe circle back. Councilmember Anderson?
I would be happy to entertain the study session for the limited item that we were hoping to get feedback on, on the 22nd or at a committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So just to be clear, this is a property that previously the council has worked on because it is the Flex property that we've had a little bit of work on in the past, and it was not included in the docket by the Planning Commission, and we are working to determine if we would like to learn more about it on the 22nd. We're pretty split. We're pretty split on this, but there is some amount of interest. I hear, and I don't want to put words in this councilmember's mouth, so correct me if I'm wrong, but Mr. Fields, I hear in the like kind of scheduling questions, an interest in being okay with learning more about the property. Would that, about the proposal, would that be correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And as Councilmember Anderson said, wherever you can put it on the schedule, I'm okay with.
Council President Kritzler.
I just want to state, I think in regards to the item that is not proposed to go on the docket, should we decide to vote on that particular aspect, I likely will recuse myself. So that's part of why I'm being uncharacteristically silent about when and how we schedule this.
And to clarify, you would recuse yourself from a vote to put it on the docket or later in the process?
Just on that piece.
Could you say which piece? Putting it on the docket or?
On the putting it on, just, yeah, I likely would recuse myself regarding this item.
Regarding all matters. Okay.
So I would leave it to the rest of the council to decide. I do, I would say just in terms of scheduling, Councilmember Fields, it sounded like was good putting it on new business, and I heard others who wanted to put it on business meeting, so we could do that, some potential stuff.
Glenn, in your, and just for the public who's like, why the heck is this decision taking so long? Because we do our business in the open, and we have not prior had conversations about this, so appreciate your patience. Glenn, in the, or Deputy Director Allen, in the consideration of how to have a second conversation, was a staff report or having it at new business considered, or was the study session on the 22nd proposed as the best place to have a potential conversation?
We felt at the study session, because that will provide the direction of writing up the ordinance of which items would be included, so that would give time to finalize those documents, have council and the community review, and then have it at consent or, you know, for a discussion at the August 4th meeting.
Okay, so by my count, we have more council members interested in learning more than not learning more? Is that a fair assessment? Yeah, I think that that's where we're at. And I do see that Council Vice President has another thought. Go ahead.
I'm fine with that. I was just going to say I could ask my questions individually, but it's more folks than just myself are interested, and I'm fine with a shorter amount of time on a study session.
Okay. Well, let's proceed with the learning more. It sounds like is where we're at, and I, you know, actually, the scheduling is actually beyond my scope as your committee chair here, so the suggestion was for a study session, and I will just ask the staff and council leadership to connect on that, about when we can have the next conversation. Does that work, Glenn?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Really appreciate your patience with this. Thank you. Okay, council, the last item that we are going to discuss today is the CIP, excuse me, the Capital Investment Program Project Updates for Q2. This is to prepare us for a staff report on July 15. Deputy Director Garcia is back, we'll introduce the item. Mr. Gibbs is back, thank you, and we will gather questions ahead of the study session, excuse me, staff report.
Unfortunately, Tess Wilkinson is sick today, so we're standing in for her. So we're here to hear any questions and feedback on which projects that you would like to hear more of. You received a draft of the slide deck in your packet.
Thank you so much. Who would like to kick us off? All right, I'll go ahead and jump in. For me, the big one is the MOC, and I realize that it is an item in and of itself, but it would be helpful to actually hear in the staff report, when is council's next update on that? The number that we have been modeling, oh, did I already?
It's in the works. It is coming on the calendar for you, but we can.
Yeah, it would be helpful to just.
Bring it out where it falls.
Yeah, bring the public along with us in the presentation on that. Of course, something I'm always watching is this number. We've had this number, 225,000, and I'm, of course, you know, watching, I don't expect us to get into this next week, but I'm broadly watching, like, how much will that still be able to get us in terms of all of our hopes and dreams? So it's just the project nearest and dearest, I think, for me, and I also noticed the update that there, the interviews with the finalists are complete, so if there's anything you'd like to say about that process with those project teams, that would be helpful to learn at our, at our study session. I imagine the council would appreciate an update on Evans Creek and where the latest is on that, too. Council Vice President Forsyth?
Plus one to Evans Creek. Thanks.
Okay, great. Other questions from the council? Council President Kritzler?
Yeah, thank you. I think what might be helpful as well, I had been taking a look back at our environmental sustainability dashboard, and we have a couple metrics related to this in the dashboard that were lower than I would have expected. So if you could kind of cover that as part of the presentation, I think it'd be helpful to understand how some of this plan update that we're doing would relate to some, especially some of our natural systems goals.
Do you want to name any specific items to focus on, or just, we will?
I can email you a couple.
Okay, that would be great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields?
Yeah, there's a way to get an overview of our pavement work, and, you know, are we tracking with the goals and the percentages that we'd hope to complete and our projected completion on upgrading or returning our roads back to usability? I know that a few years ago, we had a very low index rating. It'd be interesting to know how much progress we've made and how much we expect in the next 12 months.
Actually, currently, we are in the middle of doing a pavement management plan, so we can give an update on that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the council? It makes sense, as we get a little deeper into the year, a lot of these we have seen contracts for, so congratulations on that which has already gotten started, or that which is beginning to wrap up. Lots of completed projects already at this point. So looking forward to the study session, excuse me, staff report on July 15, and I don't see any other questions, so we're looking forward to that coming back on the 15th. Council President Kritzler?
After this item's over, I just had to comment.
Thank you. Okay. Really appreciate that. Have a great day, everybody, and the last item in our agenda is a read-only items. Council can send questions on that item to the Public Works Director. It is a Stormwater and Surface Water System Plan Progress Update. Really hitting me with the alliterations today, everyone. Council President Kritzler, you had a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to follow up on our previous item, just to note that we don't have to do special scheduling for that other item, it's already on the study session for July 22, so we'll just have it go shorter if it goes shorter, if there's fewer questions.
Wonderful. Thank you for the update. Seeing no other agenda items, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.